Test.
Thank you all, bring this meeting, regular meeting, the Clear Lake City Council, at Clear Lake City Hall Chambers, Council Chambers, fourteen oh five oh Olympic Drive, Clear Lake, California, to order at six P M. So, first, I think to begin. Can we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Wilson.
Present.
Councilmember Hooton.
Here.
Councilmember Downey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Slotin.
Here.
And Mayor Kramer.
Here.
All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, be led by Councilmember Downey.
Ready, begin.
You'll all remain standing, please, for the invocation, Mister Eli Andrews, are you hopefully here? Alrighty. Well, then, we will. Anybody we want to remember, or council? All right. Well, then, we will pass on the moment silence and move on, so take your seat, please. About that. All right. So, moving on, I'm going to go over the meeting procedures. All items on agenda will be open for public comments before final action is taken. Citizens wishing to introduce written material into the record at a public meeting on any item are requested to provide a copy of written material to the Administrative Services Director, City Clerk, prior to the meeting date, so the material may be distributed to City Council prior to the meeting. Speakers must restrict comments to the item as it appears on the agenda and stay within a three-minute time limit. I have the discretion of limiting the total discussion time for an item. Council, this is, please remember this one, the council cannot answer questions or provide comment while a citizen is giving their public comment. So, once your comments are complete, I do have the option, if appropriate, of referring you to staff for follow-up. If you're on Zoom meeting, please note that only written comments will be taken via Zoom using the Q and A chat feature. Please enter your comments into the Q and A chat. Okay, moving on to adoption of the agenda. Mayor, City Manager Flora, are there any modifications to the agenda?
No modifications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Could I have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
I second.
Yeah, motion has been made by Vice Mayor Slotin and seconded by Councilmember Downey. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, presentations, our first one will be October's. No, no dogs, so report on our dogs, animals, animal control.
Mister Mayor, Council, to date, two hundred and eighty-two dogs have come into the shelter, two hundred and sixty dogs have left the shelter, forty-seven are rescued, one hundred and eighty-eight returned to owner, thirty-four adopted, two euthanized, with a ninety-eight point eighty-four percent release rate. Current shelter population, sixty-nine dogs, with fifty-seven adult dogs, twelve puppies, up from fifty-eight dogs prior month, with fifty-seven adult dogs and one puppy, one of the dogs in the shelter.
Oh, yeah.
Thirty-four citations have been written, fifty microchips, two hundred and eleven free vaccinations from clinics, two hundred and nine vaccinations, sixty-seven neuters, sixty-eight spays.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lieutenant.
Sorry. That's here today.
All of those are here today, correct? Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to presentation. The proclamation declaring October twenty twenty-five is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Is there anybody here representing breast cancer patients? Okay, I will then just read the proclamation. I get the right one. Okay, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October twenty twenty-five, whereas while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains the most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second leading cause of death among women in the United States, and whereas each year it is estimated that more than two hundred and twenty thousand women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer and more than forty thousand will die as a result of the disease. And whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to increase awareness about the disease, and whereas during this month, we reaffirm our commitment to support breast cancer research and to educate all citizens about its risk factors, detection, and treatment, and whereas as we display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing to raise awareness, we also support those courageously fighting breast cancer and honor the lives lost to the disease. I apologize for not having any pink on today, but I will correct that going forward. And whereas this October, we recognize breast cancer survivors, those battling the disease, their families and friends, who are a tireless source of love and encouragement, and applaud the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers, working to find a cure for this deadly disease, and whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity to unite all citizens in our community to prevent breast cancer deaths through increased education and regular screening. Now, therefore, City Council of the City of Clear Lake does hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-five as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Clear Lake, dated this day, October second, twenty twenty-five, and signed by me as mayor. I will hold this until we can get it to the appropriate representative. And moving on, next presentation will be by Chief Hobbs, of an employee commendation, chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we want to recognize Sergeant Mike Peralta for an incident that happened a couple months ago, during a call for, call for service. Unfortunately, things got a little out of control. Fortunately, Sergeant Peralta was able to handle the situation very well, despite being injured by a person that decided to do something violent, and he was able to safely control the situation and prevent anyone from being seriously injured. Well, let's give a little background on, on Mike Peralta. He came here to Clear Lake P D just over ten years ago. Prior to that, he worked for the Calistoga Police Department for about eight years. He got into law enforcement a little later in life. He'd done various things before that, including serving in the military. After that, at some point, he worked at Home Depot, was in the management side of things there, and then he decided to make the move to law enforcement, which took him to Calistoga, and then ultimately to us in twenty fifteen. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Snyder to talk about, a little more detail about the incident.
Good evening, members of the council. I am here today to recognize the extraordinary courage and professionalism of Sergeant Michael Peralta. On May twenty-fourth, Sergeant Peralta responded to what began as a welfare check of a man reportedly behaving erratically in his front yard. What seemed like a routine call quickly escalated into a life-threatening situation. Without warning, the subject armed himself with a pair of long-handled chairs and stabbed Sergeant Peralta in the abdomen. Despite being attacked, Sergeant Peralta acted with remarkable composure and restraint. He disarmed the attacker, prevented further harm, and together with his fellow officers, safely took the suspect into custody. His actions ensured the safety of his partners, the suspect, and the community at large. This incident underscores the dangers our officers face every day. It also highlights Sergeant Peralta's dedication to duty, his quick decision-making, and his commitment to protecting others even while under personal attack. Tonight, we commend Sergeant Peralta for his professionalism and commitment to the department. His actions are a testament to the values of the Clear Lake Police Department, and we are proud to recognize him for his service. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. All right. We'll now move on to our last presentation. Certificates of appreciation to the Clear Lake Summer Concert and Movie Night sponsors. I'm going to come down in front, because I do see at least some of you in the audience, and I'd like to have you come up when I'm reading your. Ah, first one I have here, I know you're here, barbecue by Via Sadi, Kim, could you come up? Thank you so much for, this is a certificate of appreciation to barbecue by Via Sadi, presented in grateful recognition of supporting the Clear Lake Summer Concert Series and the Clear Lake Summer Movie Night Series. City Council of the City of Clear Lake extends a thank you in honor of your generosity to our community, dated this day of second of October twenty twenty-five, and signed by me as mayor. You go again, thank you.
Okay, let me sit there, we'll stand.
I'll stand up here, we'll get a photo, okay. The second one would be to, with etcetera, no, no, that, see anybody, giving representation to them. Again, it's a grateful recognition of the support of the Summer Concert Series, I will get this to them. Probably tomorrow. Third one is to Grocery Outlet, you know, what do you from Grocery Outlet? They're all hardworking, hard at work. Again, it's presented in grateful recognition, supporting the Clear Lake Summer Concert Series. Next one is to Rotary Club of Clear Lake, I know there's at least one Rotary in my county, otherwise I could turn around and give it to her. Oh, there's, there's two of them, and a future member. That's true. Yeah, but he's already. Hey, certificate of appreciation, Rotary Club of Clear Lake, presented in grateful recognition of supporting the Clear Lake Summer Concert Series. City Council of the City of Clear Lake extends a grateful thank you in honor of your generosity to our community, again dated the second day of October twenty twenty-five, and signed by me as mayor. Which club do you want to, want all three? You can stay up.
Oh, sure.
Maybe get a group. All right, the next one is to Lake County Tribal Health. Nor is that a gentleman here. This is Doctor Johnson, that's what I heard him called the other night. He was called that at our, at our luau last weekend, so I told him forevermore I'm going to call him Doctor Johnson. Hey, certificate of appreciation to the Lake County Tribal Health, presented in grateful recognition, supporting the Clear Lake Summer Concert Series. City Council of the City of Clear Lake extends a thank you in honor of your generosity to our community and your organization, for generations of the community, dated the second day of October twenty twenty-five, and signed by me as mayor. And the next one, I think I see somebody here from a California Engineering Company, yeah, I need someone to plug in. Hey. So, this certificate of appreciation, California Engineering Company, presented in grateful recognition of supporting the Clear Lake Summer Concert Series. City Council of the City of Clear Lake extends a thank you in honor of your generosity to our community, dated the second day of October twenty twenty-five, and again signed by me as mayor. All right. Redwood Credit, you want here for Redwood? All righty. So, again, this certificate of appreciation is Redwood Credit, presented in grateful recognition of supporting the Clear Lake Summer Concert Series. And City Council of the City of Clear Lake extends a thank you in honor of their generosity to our community, again dated today, October second, twenty twenty-five, and I will get this to them. Want to be Clear Lake Waste Solutions? There she is. Okay, this certificate of appreciation to Clear Lake Waste Solutions, presented in grateful recognition of supporting Clear Lake Summer Concert Cities, Series. City Council of the City of Clear Lake extends a thank you in honor of your generosity to our community, dated the second day of October twenty twenty-five, and signed by me as mayor. Next one, West America Bay, anybody from West America here? All right, well, I will get back to them tomorrow also, again, it's presented in grateful recognition of supporting the Summer, Clear Lake Summer Concert Series. And City Council of the City of Clear Lake extends a thank you in honor of their generosity to our community, again dated the second day of October twenty twenty-five. Only two months. Next one is Argonaut Constructors, anybody from Argonaut here? And it's presented in grateful recognition of supporting the Clear Lake Summer Concert Series. City Council, City of Clear Lake extends a thank you in honor, thanks them in honor of their generosity to our community, again dated the second day of October twenty twenty-five, signed by me as mayor. Last one. Certificate of Appreciation to Lakeside Herbal Solutions, there he is, I knew Chris wouldn't miss this opportunity.
Good to see you.
All right, this certificate of appreciation, Lakeside Herbal Solutions, presented in grateful recognition of supporting Clear Lake Summer Concert Series and Clear Lake Summer Movie Night Series. City Council of the City of Clear Lake extends a thank you in honor of your generosity to our community, dated the second day of October twenty twenty-five, and signed by me as mayor.
Thank you again.
Okay, want to get a group picture? Thanks again to all of you for your support in this city. I will, some of any of the ones I know. Okay. We'll now move on to public comment. This is the time for any member of the public to address the City Council on any matter not on the agenda, that is, within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act with limited exceptions does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. Council cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerned, concerns may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Please note, the comments from the public will also be taken on each agenda item. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. The council, and this is important, the council cannot answer questions or provide comment while a citizen is giving their public comment. Once your comments are complete, I may refer you to staff for follow-up as appropriate. So, at this time, I think we have two requests for public comment were submitted, I'll call on those first, Kathy Plowman.
Hi, my name is Kathy Plowman, and I have a few things I'd like to say, it's going to probably run more than three minutes, so I'm going to try to make it off really fast. First thing, the last council meeting, there was a person up here, I was going to say her name, Rita, that said a lot of things about me and about the thrift store and about North Bay and everything, that's not true. I'm not a liar, I'm not a thief, I work twenty-four seven for the animals. At this last two weeks, I haven't even been out of the car, I've been running cats around, dogs around to get fixed. My whole life is living and breathing animals. I spend all my money, all my time, all my energy on animals, that's all I do, and stuff. So, I don't like when people come up here, say things, imply that stealing money down the thrift store, or North Bay is corrupt, or whatever, that's on you guys to figure out, and stuff. I can say a couple of things, what Mark did wrong, he did not do enough PR work to make himself look good, and stuff, he's done a lot of good things that people don't know about, but everybody trashes him, you guys got rid of him, that's fine, whatever, and stuff, but he is a good guy. Every time I call him, I have no problems, he's fixed dogs that I've called, had to be fixed. And when people were saying that we didn't have money in the bank, and we did have money in the bank to fix animals, and he stepped forward, he fixed them, spent sixteen hundred dollars just on one dog, and stuff, so, anyway, there's a lot of things that go on in this city that is not true, that is not good, and stuff, so, I just want to set that record, correct? And I was a party too, at one point, I was convinced, I was talked into coming up here and talking about somebody that I did not, I did not care where she was fixing, that's Charmaine, I did not care where she was fixing animals, I didn't care if she was fixing them on the moon, but I was talked into coming up here, saying that she was going to be investigated and stuff, which was not right. So, I fall, I fell into that trap. So I fall, I fell into that trap too and stuff. And the people that spend so much time on Facebook, slandering people, going after them, them and stuff. We spent less time on the internet and Facebook. Maybe we could get something done with these animals. But everybody spends so, minute I walk up this door, I'm gonna have people slamming me from, on Facebook. And stuff, I don't know where you find the energy of the time. I don't have the time or the energy to do that. I'm busy fixing the animals of Clear Lake is what I'm doing. And so if anybody wants to talk to me, come down to the thrift store. I'll, I'll tell you what's going on and stuff, but I don't expect them to come up here. Get on Facebook, everybody's talking about how North Bay did this, or we did that, or whatever. Well, guess what? I called Mark today to save an animal. It was Johnny on the spot. Save the dog. Dog was pit bull fighting. So you know, maybe the story should get out there, right? He should have put more energy into doing, saying things that he was doing out there. But he just felt, he's another person that feels like if you just don't say anything, you don't say anything negative, it's all gonna come out good in the end.
Mr. Mayor, that's time.
So anyway, I'll come in at a time and finish up.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, uh, next one was sent a request in, uh, Jim Hackett.
I think I'm getting better at this. Uh, my name is Jim Hackett. I'm a resident of Clear Lake. First of all, I wanna say thank you. Landscaping cut the shrub on the corner. Now, my next hope is maybe a three-way stop, because I see, you know, cars coming down lakeshore thirty-five, forty miles an hour at eight o'clock in the morning. And granted, there's no kids at the beach at that time, but if they're used to you doing that speed, a stop sign would stop it. You know, they would have to come to a stop and go. So I'm hoping that that will become a reality. Uh, again, last week, my name was mentioned also by Rita. And I would just like the council, if they could, is just to streamline, you know. A business doesn't necessarily affect the city council in that retrospect, so it should be, you know, either put down or said, you know, that's not city business, you know. We have a job to do. We're working on the thrift store. We're gonna make it happen. You know, everything, you know, above rent PG&E, water and so forth, goes to the animals. And it gets spread, and that's fine, you know, the, the, the focus is the animals. And we need to get them. And Kathy was right. We had a dog that was injured. And you know, Mark is not supposed to be taking animals into the shelter. He took this one, okay, because it needed veterinary care, it needed to get out of that situation. You know, that's going over and above and granted, yeah, he is animal control right now. But that's something that we need to focus on. That's why Kathy and I, you know, are down there on a daily basis. You know, generating capital to get animals fixed. You know, using what we have to help people that can make an appointment and can't afford it, okay? If they come to us, we try to step in and take care of that for them. You know, it's, we're dealing with a community that is not rich. I mean, I look at myself, I make fourteen hundred dollars a month. You know, I subsidize it doing Meals on Wheels. Okay, and I barely make it month to month. But my, my goal is the animals. It's filthy. And I hope the council looks at that, because we need a decent shelter, we need avenues, we need people to come together. You know, and that's what we're, that's our goal. You know, I want differences set aside, you know, and do it, okay? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, those are the written one or pre-written ones that came in. Um, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak? Come on forward, please introduce yourself and, and your place of residence.
Hi, um, my name is Lynette Kirkwood. I'm the founder of um, Community Day, Unity Day, which is a celebration of Martin Luther King. I'm a resident of Clear Lake for over seventeen years. I love it here. I came here just to suggest hopefully in the future that maybe the city could help me co-sponsor or sponsor Unity Day. It's a celebration of Martin Luther King's um, birthday on January nineteenth twenty twenty six this year coming up. And um, I've been doing it basically with a committee of a couple of people and myself for the past, uh, well, it'll be thirteen years next year. So that's all, um, hopefully, maybe you might wanna float on it or put it in a agenda. I, I don't know exactly, you know, my sister was a city councilperson, but I don't know the actual procedure. But if it's a possibility that it could be on an agenda, that the city would um, sponsor or co-sponsor. And I'd like to have it at the senior center. We had it at the senior center before, and it does accommodate quite a few people. People come from all over and one time I had to cancel it because um, I'm a member of Praises Design Church and they were helping me as well. Pay all the fees and everything, but they weren't gonna be in town, so I had to cancel it at the last minute. People were stopping me in the market. I couldn't go anywhere, you know, so that's all. Thank you so much. I really appreciate your time. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments.
If you have any flyers or information on your event, can you, sorry, can you maybe bring those by?
Oh, sure. To you, Terry, Tara.
Yeah, you could bring to Alan.
Yeah, I have a whole folder on newspaper articles and everything.
Thank you.
Throughout the year.
Are there any other public comments? One up and state your name and your residence.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Margaret Garcia, City of Clear Lake. Um, I'm first off just wanting to know if I could find out how many um, Zoom uh, people are online. Could I get and find that out today?
We can't answer it.
Is, I know, oh, what is that? You're pointing to something. I'm, I'm not sure what you're saying there, but um, it's, it's not a okay, so how, how many does it say? I'm half blind.
Four.
Oh, four, okay, that's an easy answer. It's not a big deal, Mayor. Um, and also, um, I see item seven on the consent agenda as far as the Boyle's Fire. And I'm curious, I know you can't answer me, but what the uh, declaring, um, you know, continuing to declare uh, an uh, local emergency, what exactly does that do? Or, or why would that be happening? I'm also curious as to, was there ever a um, cause of the Boyle's Fire determined? And I know you can't answer me, I'm just saying that would be something I'd like to know. Maybe it's published somewhere and I just don't know about that. Um, and also, I, I was hoping that maybe future, in the future, um, something could be discussed about what's happening with the water issues and the flooding issues um, in this area, well, in the city. Um, and what might be um, you know, planned for areas that are a problem that I've brought up before. So that's basically it, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garcia. Are there any other comments under one up? Kathy, and introduce yourself and where you're from, you know.
I wasn't gonna come up, but I think, my name's Stephanie Hummel and I'm from Clear Lake. And I, I don't know where else to actually turn, so I just figured I'll come up here. Um. I just was caught off guard that um, Knott's um, doesn't sell gas anymore. Um, I was just wondering, um, I know I used to go to the Tuesday meetings and I haven't been there. And we had talked about um, the uh, gas station opening at uh, Four Corners. So I'm just wondering, what's my best um, way to find out stuff that is happening in the town or county? What's, so I guess that's it. Um, thank you.
Would you like to address that?
Well, I would encourage you to sign up for the city newsletter. If you haven't, um, that's a good way to find out about what's going on. And if you have questions about projects like that, you can always stop by the office and I'll be happy to give you an update.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Are there any other comments? All right, seeing none, I will close public comments. Oh, excuse me. Are there any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Uh, we'll close public comments now and we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the council requests otherwise or a staff has requested a change under adoption of the agenda, in which case the item will be removed for separate consideration. Any items are removed will be taken up following the motion to approve the consent agenda. Uh, are there any changes from you? Is anyone on council like to pull? All right. Does any member of the public wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda? Again, this is your time to speak, not to ask questions.
You know, Mr. Mayor, you're not gonna deter me from coming up here and, and, and feeling free to come up and bring up what I wanted to discuss, even though you always try to shut me down.
Either.
So I'm not asking.
Say, please sit down.
I'm not asking questions of you. I have, with that.
So good, go ahead, please.
Questions are bad. Yeah, I know. Um, I'm curious about item number seven, which I just brought up about the Boyle's Fire, and I'd like to possibly hear more about that and what exactly that means, like I had just asked. So that, that's what.
That's what you'd like to hear?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'd like to hear.
Perhaps, and after you could make an appointment with uh, our city manager who can tell us.
Okay, I thought it might get discussed after the ascent, the consent agenda is approved minus item seven. I don't know if it's top secret, but I'm just, that's my, my uh, question, my request. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and the city council, city manager, of course, and everybody.
Would you like me to provide a brief response?
Yes.
Garcia, okay. Um, so.
This is Garcia, please listen. No, no, sit down, you can listen back there.
So um, the, the state of emergency is recommended by the Office of Emergency Services to still be on um, an official declaration until all the cleanup efforts have passed. Um, I, I believe really all of that stuff is done. We need to confirm with them that we can take it off the agenda. I, I have no information of any kind at this point on the actual cause of the Boyle's Fire. Uh, we'd have to follow up with um, Cal Fire and Lake County Fire Protection District about that.
Okay. Are there any comments on Zoom? Are there any other comments in the public?
I'm here to speak.
I'll be, I'll be easy on you.
Okay, no, no, oh, well, I just don't know when I do the comment. I'm here to speak about the Sonoma uh, Clean Power. Do I wait?
That's an agendized item, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any comments for, on the consent agenda on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will see no comments. Uh, more comments, I will now take a motion in a second to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
I move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Motion's been made by Council Member Downey.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sloten. Please uh, vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move on to business items. Uh, item ten, discussion and consideration of Clear Lake joining Sonoma Clean Power. Uh, City Manager Flora, you'd like to proceed with the staff report.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. So um, I'll, I'll be brief. I know you've got uh, quite a bit of information about this at this point, but um, the city council received an initial presentation from Sonoma Clean Power on July seventeenth, and then just earlier this week uh, the council had a joint meeting with the City of Lakeport and the County of Lake over in uh, Lakeport. There was a lot of information provided at that meeting. Um, so unless there's specific questions, I don't know that um, I'm planning to get in anything. We do have Mr. Cypher's here, the chair of his board. Um, so I think he may wanna make some brief comments and then we can address questions at the.
Come on up.
Thank you for having us back, and I really appreciate the council taking the time to meet on Tuesday with the joint meeting with the supervisors and, and Lakeport as well. And, and I think um, for my part, um, we're here, I'm here with my board chair, Brian Barnacle.
You are, I, I'm sorry, with the.
Jeff Cypher's. Yeah, thank you. And um, I think one of the things that I was really grateful for was the suggestion of Supervisor Owen to travel around and meet with all the municipal advisory committees. And so we did over the last two months and got a very good feel for the, the sentiment in, in Lake County for um, joining Sonoma Clean Power. And I, I think if I could characterize it, there's a lot of interest in that prospect and having that option of having a choice of who's generating power. And I think there were a lot of questions about where the status of geothermal power production in terms of the geozone aspect of this decision is. And so for, for, for tonight, I think what I wanna offer is a clarification, which is Sonoma Clean Power's geozone effort is not yet a project, a location, or a technology, or a third-party developer. That is in the future. What I wanna share with you today is our geozone effort is a process for engaging the public for figuring out what good geothermal projects are. And our expectation is that we're seeking partners in, and not specifically the cities. This is, the geozone aspect is really expressly for county partnerships. But I think it's important just to share with everyone that what we're looking for is an expectation that good new geothermal that is low water, that's low land use, that is um, advanced in, in reducing seismic impacts and so forth is worth pursuing, but the details will have to be dictated by the community. So what is, what does a good geothermal project look like? That's still gonna have to come from the grassroots. And so we've been through that process in Sonoma and Mendocino already. And what I expect is if the three jurisdictions here in Lake County join, that we would go through that process again here and refine all those community expectations before we propose a project and before we bring anything like a map or a proposal forward. So I think with that clarification, i- if it's all right, may I invite my board chair up just to say hello?
Absolutely.
So, so Brian Barnacle is our board chair here, um, and also um, on the city council pedalament. Mayor, council, staff and community, um, it's an honor to be here tonight. I apologize I couldn't be here on Tuesday. Um, I had other obligations. Um, my, I'm here to hopefully um, just tell you how excited the board is. This hasn't been something that we took lightly in offering, um, and I, I trust that you haven't taken it lightly either. Um, the things that I love about being on Sonoma Clean Power is being able to um, advocate for what's good for the people I, I represent. Um, energy costs are rising, um, and Sonoma Clean Power, I'm proud that we um, the, the part of the bill that we control, which is about one-third of it, um, we're twenty percent lower than PG&E. Um, I'm proud of the, the work that the staff does every day to try and find ways to reduce costs. It feels like every other meeting, we're coming forward with something that is coming from the CPU. See that we have very little influence over and our staff's bringing creative solutions to make sure we continue to deliver cost savings or cost parity with um, with what the. or cost parity with, with what the competitor is. Clean Power is in our name. Clean Power is cheaper power. And we do our damnedest every day to represent the people, just like you do here. And so I hope to get to work with you. And thank you.
Um. Was, I framed this. Jeff was talking about about projects. Do you have any, and are there any in Sonoma County that you, with the process that you were talking about, you have there for determining whether a project is good for a particular area? Have, do you, are there any projects in, in your area in Sonoma County that impact?
We.
You around Petaluma, for instance?
We do have some projects around Petaluma, some big battery projects, actually. Well, one of them dropped out, but there's one battery project that's moving forward. It's not being developed by Sonoma Clean Power. It's a private developer. You know, so that's the same thing you would be dealing with here if a private developer came in to develop a battery project. But it's nice to have, to be able to field those questions, advocate for proper SEQA review and things like that, just the way you would with any development coming into your community.
And, and that developer collaborated, adhered to, worked with whatever jurisdiction they were working in to be sure that their concerns were heard.
I mean, they, they follow the process of SEQA and all of that stuff, all that they need to do.
All of the SEQA processing.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, they did a SEQA review. Sonoma Clean Power is looking to develop its own projects. We have a pro, a policy that if we're moving forward with a project that the, the member who represents that jurisdiction is consulted and has the ability to advise on how you move forward and by engaging the community and things like that. So we take that part of our work very seriously.
The reason I'm even asking the questions is because of the AB 531 that we discussed. And now it apparently gives a lot more authority or takes, takes some local authority away from what we understand of the, of the AB 531 legislation. So despite that, you still work with jurisdictions to make sure that, that your project meets their needs as well as yours.
We're local electeds first. We want to, we want to make sure that we're, we don't, we don't want to have our constituents angry with us. So we take, we take that part of our job very seriously.
When I, when you were introduced earlier, I, you didn't say you were on Petaluma City Council, but I knew I'd seen you before and it was on a recent video that I watched. So anyhow, you, you understand where we're coming from.
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have any other, do you have any questions for either gentleman? All right, well, thank you again. Pardon me? Let's do that later on deliberation. Okay. Time then for public comment. Do we have any comments? Please introduce yourself.
West Baker, Lower Lake, and thank you, Mayor and City Council. And good to see you again. I saw you just the other night, Tuesday night. And I'm back. I didn't really get enough time to say everything I wanted the other night, and I'd like to.
Three minutes.
Yeah, I got three minutes. I had, that's all I had the other day. PG&E, always raising the rates, right? This is the email I, I briefly talked about the other night. Date is September 24th. I got this from PG&E. Starting September 1, which means it already happened, as we're retroactive of it, your residential electric rates decreased by 2.1%. Over the past 15 months, residential electric rates have dropped three times. The word that we've all keep hearing is that they just keep going up and up and up. Well, inflation goes up too. But PG&E works for us. The other part, and I didn't even see this till I read it the second time because I was so excited about the 2.1%, is that in addition to September electric rate decrease, residential electric customers will also receive $58.23 California climate credit on their October bill. So we'll all see that. So we are getting discounts from PG&E when we get it. And this was another matter that came up after the meeting the other night. Several people come up to me and ask me, do I work for PG&E? No, I do not work for PG&E. I never have. And as a conflict of interest, I don't even own stock with them. I did a long time ago, but I don't anymore. Okay? So I'm here just as a activist for our lake, the way it is, the way it's pictured in your picture up here, the way it's pictured over here. We spend a lot of money on our water up here, trying to clean up the water. We just put buoys out here, millions of dollars we're spending on this lake. The state is spending more multi-millions up in the upper lake area, trying to, to bring back the wetlands and all that stuff. That's all we got up here is our water. We got our lake and we got our aquifer underneath, and that's where we get our drinking water. Okay, I'm on the board of, of the Lower Lake water. We drilled a well down there that, that we recommend, I wasn't on the board then, but recommended to the manager not to go over 500 feet. He went 800 feet. He hit hot water. So he's in the aquifer, okay? The board down there, we, we can't use that hot water. We have to cool it down. We have to treat it and, and cool it down before we could ever send it on to anybody to drink. So we're in that warm resource that this geozone wants to get into. They want to tap into it, and they're going to tap into it with horizontal drilling, which means they go down and then they go cross. That's the newness of this all. And they, when they go across, they can go under the lake, they can go under creeks, streams, they can go under properties, they can go under all kinds of stuff. And then they're going to frac it. And hopefully you've all heard about fracking, you know, 20 years ago, people turn on their water faucets, they catch on fire, they all get cancer and stuff like that. It's fracking is bad. It's, it's, it's chemical fluids put in the ground at high pressure to break the rocks. They're proprietary. They don't tell you what the chemicals are that they're putting in the ground. And then what happens with the fracking is that you can't get it out of there once it grows toxic. So Lower Lake, we're, we're in that zone right now. That will be fracked. The people that do the fracking, and I, I hope everybody's heard of them in the past, is Halliburton. They keep talking about this, this plant that's so, that they want to model after this plant in Utah. And Jeff, Jeff said the other night that his main contractor, he can't get a hold of because he's tied up in Utah. You know who's doing the Utah deal? Halliburton. That's who puts the poisons in the ground. Okay, there's other companies like that and, and we don't need to, we don't need to gamble on this here in the lake. We gambled our, the past people gambled on the, on the levees up, up, up at Upper Lake. It's, you guys here in Clear Lake are, are paying for it now because you get the drift of all the, all the.
The timer did go off quite a bit ago.
Hear that?
Time's up?
Please, yeah.
Well, thank you very much for listening and, and I urge a no vote on this. It's the only thing we can do for the lake. It's too new. We can review it later.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. You need to.
Okay, okay. Hi, my name's Sterling Wellman. I have been following the Sonoma Clean Power for a while. I do live in Spring Valley, but my husband and I do have a business here. Can I hand you guys these sources?
Hand them the clerk and she'll hand them to us.
There might be a blank one, sorry. Oh, do I need to talk right now? Okay, thank you. Okay, good evening. Council members and community members, my name is Sterling, and I want to speak about the future of our geothermal resources. Lake County sits on some of the richest geothermal energy reserves in the entire world. The Clear Lake volcanic field beneath our county powers massive geothermal projections. In fact, the only comparable source worldwide is found in New Zealand. And I want to make it clear, when people talk about the geysers, the strongest geothermal potential lies on the Lake County side. Not in Sonoma, not in Mendocino. Yet despite the Lake County is the second poorest county in California, we have a world-class energy beneath our feet. But we see little Bennett, oh wait, I just skipped it. Sorry, beneath our feet. But we see a little benefit whilst Sonoma County, one of the richest counties in the state, is, is pushing to tap into our geothermal system through Sonoma Clean Power, locking us in a 20-year contract where we would have only 15% say over the decisions that directly affect our land, our economy and our people. This is unacceptable. We cannot afford to give away our resources for pennies while other counties grow richer from our ground. The truth is, the so-called saving on the power bills, a minimal maybe 1.5 per customer. If you have a $300 bill for that month, you're saving $4.50. Just with what he said from PG&E giving us a credit, and they do it two to three times a year, we'll be saving more with PG&E than saving $4.50 off a $300 bill. While Sonoma County Clean Power takes the profit and reinvests it elsewhere. Instead, Lake County should be fighting for state and federal grant money to develop our own geothermal projects, projects that we own, control and benefit from. We should be bringing in scientists and engineers who will ensure the development is safe, who will, sorry, who will study the risk of pressure changes under the ground and who will protect our community from the very real dangers of earthquakes or even the volcanic activity. I am asking this council to send a clear message, say no to Sonoma Clean Power's proposal. Do not sign away our birth rights for this illustration of, of small savings and stand, demand local control, demand reinvestments here at home and demand accountability for how the resource, how these resources are used. Lake County has the greatest geothermal reserves in the world, and we must make sure that wealth serves our people, not Sonoma County, not outside investors. Thank you. If I still have a little time, I just, I'm done. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. There, no, please hold your pause. Are there any other comments, please? Mrs. Garcia, come on up. Now, you're first.
Hi. My name's Norman Kimes. I live south of Lower Lake. I'm older now than I ever thought I'd get to be. I have to become an elder and try and use my experience and wisdom to guide the decisions that are, when I was younger, were more rash. One of the important things is we have to recognize the finiteness of what we're dealing with. There are way more people in this state, in this county. I grew up here. We have, our water comes from a spring. In 1968, the last time I measured it before I moved out, it was 125 gallons per minute. Last year, it was 12 and a half. That's 10% of the volume. It's not just fresh water. We have springs all over our property. Half of them are mineral springs that are welded up from the water that's going to be used for geothermal. The other half, when we had that water tested in 68, it was like distilled water. You could put it in your battery. Now, for whatever the changes are, I don't know. It's mineralized. You don't want it anywhere near your battery or your iron. There are geothermal plants at the geysers. There is a massive pipeline system. I have a half a mile of it on my 500 acres. It's taking the wastewater from Lake, from Lakeport and dumping it into the ground at geysers because the water is a limited resource. When we start putting however many plants out there, it's going to change everything. We have these salesmen, and I call them salesmen. I built houses for 45 years. I've been to sales meetings. This was a sales meeting. In the future, we'll tell you what we're going to do. Right now, we can't tell you. It's, it's going to be, you're going to get to have input. We already did that in this county. Our water, every bit of rain belongs to Yolo County. We don't want another deal like that. That was a bad deal. I haven't heard any specifics. I want to know where their clean power plants are. I want to drive by, walk through them. How many megawatts are they generating? That's what I want to know. Where are they? Who owns them? Because if it's a private corporation, now it's a transactional. If somebody else will pay more for the power, these guys don't have it anymore. I'm not a fan of PG&E. I'm putting in solar because I'm tired of fighting about by trees. That's how I feel about PG&E, but they're a known entity.
Please wrap up your comments. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Are there any other comments? Come on up, Mrs. Garcia.
I'm Margaret Garcia, City of Clear Lake. I just have a comment as far as, well, I think that something like this is pretty a big deal. It could turn into who knows what. I think you ought to give anything that involves this serious, serious thought. There's a lot that goes into this, and I'd like to know what Mendocino and Sonoma County, what is their feel? What is their thoughts on this proposal? And is it that Sonoma Clean Energy wants to give us some kind of break on our electricity? I doubt that that's the objective, that they're real. And I know that AI is going to be a huge factor in the need for geothermal. And AI, people don't even know really all that goes into that, but, but you know, people see dollar signs and every other thing. If AI comes in with huge warehouses for, for electricity, you know, you're, you're going to change a lot. The landscape, you're, everything's changing. But maybe, you know, you can have some kind of control what goes on in ours, in our county, our city. And the fact that Melissa County owns the rights to our lake, Lake, Clear Lake, is something to consider also. I don't want to have Sonoma County owning our geothermal rights here in our county, in our town. And all of a sudden, no, they just come in and they just put their whatever, they're like the lake, they put their hose in, they pump water out whenever they feel like it. And we have no control over that. You know that. You know, the same thing might happen here, and that would be very, very sad, sad thing. So just food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Already had your comments, sorry. You can, you can bring material up if you want, but you had your comments. Okay, are there any other comments? I feel like there's been some questions brought up that I can't answer. Would either of you like to come up and address especially what, what control you have and what control we have over we, the county? As over.
Certainly. So, so a few of the things that I can respond to directly, and then I'm happy to take questions as well, is one is the climate credit that was mentioned on PG&E's bills. That's actually a state credit that's not connected to PG&E. So that actually applies to all customers, including ours. So everyone gets those same credits. That's actually connected to what used to be called cap and trade. But, but basically all electric customers get that. So that's not a difference. Another one is, we're a local government. We're not a for-profit entity. So there were some concerns that we're here for the profit. It's actually easier for us if we don't serve Lake County. It's a simpler enterprise. We rolled out initially to serve Sonoma County alone. That's why our name is Sonoma Clean Power. We had no intention in expanding, and it was actually Lake County in 2015 that invited us to consider expanding. We had never contemplated that. So we had to start thinking about what would it look like to expand service? And in 2017, Mendocino, we, we were too young in 2015 to consider expanding. We were only one year into service. In 2017, Mendocino asked for an expansion. But because Lake County had already prepped us for that, we were ready to consider that option. And so we did, in fact, end up expanding to Mendocino County. For folks who wanted to understand Mendocino's experience, there is a tape of the Tuesday workshop that's. That's already up on YouTube, uh, and the link is easily findable with a search. So, um, I'd encourage folks to see Mendocino County's experience that there was a supervisor there to talk about that as well. And, and then this latest round in twenty twenty-five, um. Really what we found was there is a better opportunity, I think, for, for serving Lake County with, um, better. Lower fees from Pichene now than we saw in twenty nineteen and much more favorable conditions. It's my opinion, and this is my opinion alone, that, um. Should Lake County consider joining, uh, in this round? Uh, service, by the way, wouldn't begin until May of twenty twenty-seven, so that's a year and a half from now. Um, but that rates for electric service in Lake County today. Would be expected to be lower in fact than rates in Sonoma and Mendocino Counties because Pichene's fee is expected to be lower. Uh, based on today's regulatory conditions. That's the most favorable conditions I've ever seen in the last ten years. Um, I, I think my last thought is. This is a prospect that anybody who is not excited about can opt out. And can opt out with no charge at all for the five month period during enrollment. And if you wait until after that period, you can opt out for five dollars. And not be a part of it. Um, for the geothermal aspects and the criticisms that were raised, I think what I would offer is. We cannot permit any project. We're not allowed to as an agency. That still has to be done by a lead authority here in Lake County. And even under AB five thirty-one, um, which is for larger projects. The California Energy Commission would have to consult with Lake County and all of the tribes. Um, in, in close proximity to any projects. And so I think what I'd offer is. I still feel you're in the driver's seat. Um, what we're looking for is community input on those kinds of projects. Um, I understand this is a matter of trust and trust requires time and building that trust. But I think what I would offer is. I don't view what we're trying to propose as changing your authority in any manner at all, other than adding a voice on our board. Um, in a regional manner, and I hope that's material. I hope that actually matters. So. Um, unless you've got further questions, I can take my seat.
Anyone have a question? Oh, okay. Yes, no, thank you. Okay. Are there any, uh, comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So seeing no comments, we're, let's, we'll now close, um, public comments. And move on to deliberation and, and or, uh. Or a vote. So. Are there, does anybody want to lead off? You had a comment you wanted to make, uh, Councilmember Downey?
Yeah, I'll lead off. Um. So. Where to begin? You know, I, I appreciate you coming and all the presentations that you've come and made to the council and. Our special meeting and I appreciate, uh, you know, representative from Petaluma coming and it got me thinking and. We are not a Petaluma, we are not a Sonoma County, we are not a Santa Rosa. We are, we are different here. Our lands are beautiful, our, our land is sacred and there's history here, there's traditions and. You know, and I don't see, um. I don't see the vision that you're giving me to that will potentially happen. There's no. We have to commit, but yet commit to what? We don't know. The, the future is unknown with Sonoma Clean Power. And I, that doesn't sit well with me. Um, it's concerning and I don't know if. I'm thinking of the people that I represent and I don't think that they would like it. So. That's how I feel and, um. Unfortunately, this is not going to have my vote in favor. So.
Councilmember Wilson.
So I have some of the same concerns that my colleague has. I also have a concern that we have not spoken to our constituents. We, you know, these things were presented to us. And it's three days late, two days later, we're voting on it. And I'm, I'm feeling very uncomfortable about that. Um, I believe my vote is going to be no as well.
Councilmember Hooton. Pardon me, you'll, wait. Vice Mayor, I don't have any. Well. I think there has been a lot of public, um. Input around the lake from all of the. Meetings that you've had around the lake at different, uh. Different places, I guess, Middletown, you've been all around it. You say that Supervisor Owen took you around. Lake. We've been talking about this for quite some time, uh, beyond just the. Well, the people have been talking about it for beyond just the last three days or since, uh, the meeting on Tuesday. I don't see, if we're talking about, um. Geothermal development. Whether Sonoma County or Sonoma Clean Power is here or not, those things can still happen. Only the difference being that perhaps Sonoma Clean Power wouldn't be able to take advantage of the. Of the power that's produced at a lower, hopefully lower rate. Um, there's the production of power, the, the option of power plants in Lake County. Is not going to be controlled by Sonoma Clean Power. It's not. It's going to be by. Any, uh, power company that wants or any developer that wants to come in and make a proposal in Lake County. That said, um, I'm told, I know that five thirty-one is, is. Needs a little more clarification in my opinion, but. Uh, Sonoma Clean Power is a jurisdiction as an agency that does need to. As they have stated, need to, uh, talk with our county, I guess, as opposed to the two cities is what. Or your geo zones are going. So you still have to go through that process. It's not just that they can come in here and drop a. Drop a drill anywhere and drill. And as far as that horizontal drilling that gentleman was talking about. I think you still have to have the landowner approval for anything you take from any land. Um, so that's not a, just a given that they can drop, drop the, drop the thing down, drill under the lake and suck out our lake water. Um, and we did sell that weight that lake water to Yolo County, by the way, a hundred plus years ago. I get that. Um, I've also lived here all my life and my great grandfather came here in eighteen hundred. So I've never been as, uh. Committed to Lake County as you are. And I don't know if I'm older than you, but I'm pretty darned close. So at any rate, getting back to the point, I, I have the feeling that. That Sonoma's Clean Power is giving us an opportunity. To, uh, participate, perhaps it'll be, it won't be a great deal of, uh, Derry Keason Power, but one of the other things that they've helped. Um, as a, as a part of their process is for individuals or business owners to come in and. And get, uh, somebody else's idea of, of what the best rates through PG&E would be. Something that we don't have. PG&E is not coming up and saying, hey, this rate's too high. You need to be on this one. Sonoma Clean Power has done that. In our meeting the other night, I think there was what? Uh, instances, half a dozen instances that you showed where there were. Not only significant, but substantial savings, not, not on the difference in the cost of the power that be coming through. Sonoma Clean Power, but through the, the bottom line bill that's coming from PG&E. So I, for one, am, am very much in favor with this, of this opportunity and I think. We would be missing out if we, if we chose not to take it. And again, uh, as was just stated, if individuals don't want to be a part of it, as far as that goes. They can opt out. Uh, but. So I just, I for one, do not see. The, uh, the downsides outweighing the possible upside to this. And I am in favor of it. Oh, are there any other comments? Okay.
I will say one thing. I think having a lower bill doesn't. Trump the fact that it could change our environment, could change our lands and. What could potentially come into. Our environment here. So I, I would take my PG&E bill any day over another geothermal mine. So.
I do have a comment. Okay, so my feelings on this is, um, you know, initially the idea of a lower bill and option is comforting and it sounds good. Um, it's easy to take in, but you know. Aside from that, it's really unknown. Um, I'm uncomfortable with that. The fact that, you know, we're being told we will be in control of permitting and permissions, but we don't really even, we haven't been presented with. Options of what they're going to be asking. Um, you know, I haven't seen a diagram of any type or, um. You know, photos of anything that they have going. I don't think that this is something that we should just throw away entirely. Um, they have stated that if we don't decide basically tonight, that we'll have to wait another year, but. Um, I would love to see a conversation continue, um, and possibly throw around some actual, um. Ideas of things that we could possibly see here so that we can digest those and, and know what our future might look like. Um, around geothermal. Uh, that seems to be the focus here, not so much the solar panels or batteries. Um, so I think we should really, if we're going to sign on to this, then we should really do our homework and get together. And not feel so rushed, um, and really know, you know, what our future will hold.
Still member Wilson.
So it was also brought up the other night. Oops. It was also brought up the other night that the tribes were not consulted prior to, um. Us getting together on, um, to talk, to discuss this and, um, Sonoma. Thing Power did promise to go talk to the pro tribes after we vote on this, but I'm not comfortable with that. I would like the tribes to have. Um, put their input in this, as my colleague has said, this is sacred land. And in. I am very uncomfortable with, um, not consulting the people that have been here for more than twenty thousand years about how they feel about this.
Okay, Vice Mayor. Do you have any? Thoughts on, have you talked with the tribe since the other night? Cause that's definitely a valid question.
This is a topic that is near and dear to our heart. So we have invested greatly in tribal engagement in the last few years. Um, we have a tribal liaison. We've committed to this work. Um, and there is. There's a history here. So State of California, when they passed AB one one seven. Which enables the formation of community choice programs like Sonoma Clean Power. They neglected to include tribes in the governance structure. They only named cities and counties in who can govern these kinds of power enterprises. And let's give them the benefit of the doubt and say they just didn't think about it. Um, but that put us in a very difficult spot. It meant if we consulted with a tribe about whether or not to form a CCA or to expand service. We could not respect their input. If they told us we don't like it. We couldn't listen to that input. And if they told us they wanted it, we couldn't either. Because it would be legally a decision of the counties and the cities. So where that put us was a conversation that was very difficult with the county's tribal liaison and our own tribal liaison. To say, how can we respectfully engage tribes and when can we respectfully engage tribes? And where we landed was on Tuesday night was to say. It's legally the cities and the counties' decision to create the opportunity for this service. But the tribes can still decide whether to opt out proactively and never participate. And so we can participate by engaging all of the tribes in Lake County throughout twenty twenty-six. We have a year and a half. Um, and let them decide whether they wish to be involved or not and respect that decision. So that's the. The playbook we've, um, set out so far. And it's something that I'm committed to working with and making sure the tribes are respected and that when we engage them and ask them a question, it is a real question. Where we can respond respectfully. I hope that's helpful.
And do you have any, uh, input that perhaps both? Uh, Councilmember Downey and Councilmember Hooton brought up?
Can you be more pointed, I'm sorry.
To, well, not knowing what, uh, these power plants will do if they're drilled, what, knowing what the consequences. Would be to the lands and the lakes around them and.
I, I think. Think what I would say is. We are a collection of cities and counties. That's who we are. Um, and. When we proposed a project or when we even, when staff were considering a project. And near the city of Bukaya, the first thing we did is we called our. Um, board member from Mendocino County represented that district and said, this is the parcel we're looking at. This is what we're thinking of building there, solar and batteries. Do you think we should even pursue this? That's how we operate and that's how we will continue to operate. There's no, there's no point in us pursuing a project that's contentious with our own board members. Because that project will never proceed. There, there's, it's so easy to stop a project in California. Uh, that we will never pursue that, that there, there's no point. It, it's financially not viable. So, um. So I think, uh, that, that's an MO and, 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 and that's what Supervisor John Hascheck shared on Tuesday. Was his experience with that. And, um. And I think if there's. If there's enough distrust that we. Are not. Able to show up for each other and, and show up for you and represent your community, then I think it's not right to join. I actually think, I, I respect that. Like, I, I, I don't want us to be in a relationship that's hostile. That's not a smart relationship. Um, we're not in this to save Lake County. We're not in this to make money. Um, my board has asked me to be here because we think we will cut emissions and. Cut costs for your community, um, and help you take advantage of local resources. But that's your decision. Like, I respect that. And ultimately, where you land on that is your call. And so. I'm not here to beg. I'm not here to sell. Uh, there was a comment that I'm a salesman. Um. This decision is yours. It's not me pushing. I, I think what I observe is. Over a third of all of Californians get power from agencies like ours already. And that all happened in the last ten years. That, that was an explosion of this type of agency. And there's a reason for that. Um, on average, there's a cost savings. On average, there is a significant reduction in, in, uh, air pollution. And, and greenhouse gas emissions. And on average, there's a net flow of revenues into the local communities. Um, and so I, I believe in this model. Um, that's why I'm working here. And so I, I, I still think it's a good model and I still recommend it to you, but I leave it in your hands.
Oh, another question. You, you talk about air quality and a reduction in pollution as a, because of. The CCAs, could you explain why that would be?
Sure. I think, I think in Lake County, um, that's going to be less significant than it is statewide. So in the Central Valley, uh, CCAs are having a pretty massive impact on air quality in a positive way. By lowering the reliance on natural gas power generation and on, uh, natural gas wells and so forth. Um, in Southern California, it's even more extreme. In this area, because we don't have a natural gas power generation in your county. That's going to be less of an impact. But one thing I can share is we do work really hard with forestry management. With public safety power shut-off planning, with all of the transmission planning to try to lower the risks of wildfire. To try to lower the risks or the threats of, um, how power shut-offs are impacting our community. um, how power shut offs are impacting our communities and that can have an impact on air quality. And in our region, we in in Sonoma and Mendocino Counties, we've had a couple of big wins on that front. So where we've actually managed to lower the threat of um wildfire uh risk and where we've managed to greatly reduce the risk of public safety power shut offs. But I I can't promise we can find those in in Lake County, but we we will be happy to hunt for that.
One last question. We've been talking about geothermal production. You also, I know, do a lot of solar. What's uh, is that something that has any uh potential in Lake County?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. So we actually have a pretty broad mix. We have hydropower, we have batteries, we have solar, we have some biomass, we have a lot of wind power. So we have a very diverse portfolio. Geothermal is actually a pretty small minority of our power sources today. And um, and we'll probably remain that even with the Geozone initiative. Um, Lake County has very good solar potential. There's a lot of sunny days here. Um, it's a good spot for siting batteries too potentially, and it might be a good spot for wind. I don't know, but looking at the wind maps, it looks like there could be some wind potential here. But I want to emphasize that has to come from the community. Like, we are not building solar or batteries or wind in our other two counties without community input and voices saying like, that's a good idea. So so that's that's something we we're a public agency, we're cities and counties, which means if our citizens and our our residents don't like something, then we don't get to do it. So I want to.
You keep emphasizing you're a public agency, so. So if our so if our county supervisors, for instance, say, now you can't do that, then you don't do it. Or how how does that work with you?
So so functionally, that's that's how it works. So um, we there is a voting structure for what we are interested as an agency and that voting structure in theory could have a majority of votes go against Lake County with a with a project in Lake County. So that's that's part of the concern, I think. Um, however, where that then goes is to a permitting process, which is then controlled by Lake County. And so at that point, Lake County is then back in the driver's seat and saying whether or not that's a good project or a bad project. Um, we also start with a premise that the community needs to set up guidelines for what we do. So with geothermal, because it's so complex and so long term, we set up a process starting four years ago where we were traveling around Sonoma and Mendocino Counties, especially in the regions that have hot rock and meeting with the community and having town halls. And I would propose that we do the same thing here where we say, what are the community principles for a good geothermal project? Like, what makes it a good project? How much land are we talking about? How much water? How much um protection against seismic risk is there and air quality and so forth? And the community developed a set of principles.
And I think that's what council member Hooton was asking you for is more of that more of that specific information.
Yeah. And and I think that's very fair. And I think what I would propose back is let's do that together and not try to impose something that we already have from Sonoma and Mendocino because I know Lake County's experience is different. Sonoma County has a majority of the geysers in its territory, but Lake County has a majority of people living near those facilities. So there is a proximity of of homes here in Lake County that we don't have. And so I think that's something I would love to tap into as a as an expertise.
As I'm sorry.
A- a- as a resource, as as an expertise of of knowing the local community. We've met with folks in Cobb as early as four or five years ago, not because we were interested in Lake County, but because we wanted to inform what we were doing in Mendocino and Sonoma County. And we got a lot of good intel about what is it like to live near a geothermal facility that's a traditional type? And what what differences could we make when we develop new resources to improve on the historic types of geothermal? And and we got a lot of good information from that and we've been meeting ever since. So so that's that's a good resource for us.
I just have one quick question. Do you have, do you guys have any standalone geothermal projects currently functioning?
We do not own any geothermal projects uh today. And so all of our geothermal today, we purchase from the geysers here at Calpine as existing facilities. Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you again. Alrighty. There any more discussion? You had your thing up here a minute ago.
He answered.
Okay, well, and I guess it's uh there are no other comments. It's time to take a motion.
Point of order, do we have to go to the special meeting agenda to succeed uh the ordinance?
Uh, no, no, the the special meeting agenda, it, the item on that will be moot depending on this vote. Uh, we'll only move on to that if there is a uh affirmative vote in this.
Yeah, so this this item is just related to adopting the resolution. The special meeting was related to the ordinance. So if the resolution isn't adopted, then there's no need to do that. Um, so I I I don't know for sure where everything is here or if the council wants to take more more time or or where we're at, but.
Would I don't see it. Would it be helpful? We've got a timeline here, right? Uh, which we need to have an answer and we're at the.
Well, um, as has been mentioned at the the previous couple of meetings, in order to provide service in twenty twenty seven, um, the Sonoma Clean Power Board has to take action at their November meeting. So um you know, they need to know before that. Now, we're the first of the Lake County jurisdictions to be at this point. Um, you know, we did have the the joint meeting. There was a lot of discussion. I mean, if if you want to take a little more time and see what the other jurisdictions do, I think that is something that we could do by we don't have another meeting um currently scheduled, but we could, you know, set a meeting to do that if the council wanted, or if there's a majority that's just against the proposal altogether. It's not probably necessary to do that.
Okay.
And order, I don't see a resolution.
There.
It is on there. I I I'm not sure which one you're maybe refresh or I can.
Your item. Yeah.
Do you like me to put it up on the screen or?
Ages it on?
It's at the end of the, if you go to item ten, hit the blue. Page twenty three. Starts on twenty three and ends on twenty four.
I don't have, it's not in our pack.
It is in the packet. I don't know if you need to refresh or what the deal is, but it's it's there.
You're welcome. You're welcome to look over while we're on the board.
Well, let me uh make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake requesting that Sonoma Clean Power Authority act as community choice aggregate on behalf of the city and implement Sonoma clean power community choice aggregate program within the city.
Have a motion. Can I get a second? I will second it. Go ahead if you.
I'll second it.
All right, motion has been made by Vice Mayor Sloten, seconded by Councilmember Hooton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion uh does not pass with a majority vote of nay with a Kramer, uh Mayor Kramer and Vice Mayor Sloten voting in favor and council members Downey, Hooton and Wilson voting against.
Okay. We will now move on to uh item eleven. I would which is to rescind actions related to Eighteenth Avenue Road and Hotel Development Project and Rec. City Manager Flora.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor. So um this is related to a court order around the um Queen Nation litigation for the Eighteenth Avenue and Hotel Project. So um, I think all the information is staff report. I'll address any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions from council of staff? Pardon me?
Sure.
Can I get a better explanation on this, please?
Yes. So as part of the the litigation, the court ordered uh the city to rescind all the previous approvals uh because of the the appellate court's finding that sequel wasn't followed. And so this is just part of the process of complying with that court order. Um, effective, the judge is saying, you know, you have to, you have to rescind all those approvals that we found unlawful. So that's all this resolution does. Um, it takes back the planning commission approval that was previously passed. It's it's effectively the the council obeying the court order. So it's it's, were we not to do this, we would be possibly contempt. Uh, so it's it's it's, yeah, it's kind of a necessary thing to comply.
Any question? Other questions, council?
It doesn't, and just to clarify, it doesn't, it doesn't it doesn't affect any future action or, you know, it it doesn't have any real impact on on plans going forward. It just takes back.
Basically, it's more than anything, it's acknowledging the court's order.
Correct. It just takes back what was previously approved.
Councilmember Wilson, did you have a question? All right. I'll open this up to public comment. Remember, the council cannot answer questions or provide comment while a citizen is giving their public comment. Once your comments are complete, I may be able to refer to you to staff for follow up if that's necessary.
Margaret Garcia, City of Clear Lake. I had a hard time hearing him completely, so I'm I'm wanting clarification. Is this a sequoia matter? Is that what they re- them making you rescind actions is around sequoia? I didn't quite hear all he said.
It you can read the appellate court's opinion online. It's available if you want to look into the details of it, but it it is a part of, the issue was
sequoia. Yeah. Um, I'm just wanting to comment about the fact that this is gonna probably cost a lot of money to fight this in court. So I'm sure that you've got to take all that into consideration, the fact that this project might possibly get out of hand as far as cost because it's got to be something you go and fight uh in court about the sequoia matters. So um I'm just curious as to, you know, the amount of money that's already gone into the project and then now you're looking at sequoia. You're talking a whole nother uh ballgame. So um I'm just wanting clarification. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other public comment? Is there anything on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Now, uh, closed public comment. Is there any discussion? I'll now take a motion.
I have, I have moved that we approve resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake rescinding the approval of the mitigated negative debt uh I S twenty twenty two dash oh six and all related project approvals for Eighteenth Avenue Extension and Hotel Project in compliance with preemptatory writ of mandate issued by the Superior Court of California County of Lake.
Motion has been made by Vice Mayor Sloten.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Wilson. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to item twelve, which is a public hearing discussion and consideration of changes to the fiscal year twenty five twenty six fee schedule. The manager Flora, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. So um, I'll give a brief overview of the four sections of fees that we're requesting some adjustments to. First is related to the registration program. Um, the city recently adopted changes to that program. The associated fees haven't been um updated since it was adopted. Um, or or since it was uh implementation was ceased at least in two thousand eight. Um, so those fees are included in here. The the same fees that were discussed, um, the multiple times that we talked about the program, but I can go over those in more detail if you like. Um, category number two is related to um, late fees and penalties. So um, we discovered that there's some um, lack of consistency in portions of the uh municipal code and the fee schedule on um penalties and interest charged on um invoices that uh remain unpaid. Um, invoices from the city that remain unpaid. And so asking the council to uh add this into the fee schedule. Um, it's not something, we don't send too many invoices out, but um, you know, there are some situations, we have a situation with um some sewer district fees that uh we invoiced work that was completed last year and they haven't been paid. And so this would provide um, the needed clarity for us to move forward with collection of the amounts. Um, related to encroachment permits, we have a number of fees related to encroachment permits. And if you look at the fee schedule, just um, a reminder of the things that were uh requesting changes are highlighted in the fee schedule. There's a number of pages there, but um, so some of the examples related to encroachment permits right now, we just have a calculation of a fee based on lineal footage of an encroachment in our right of way. Um, there are some cases where um, the encroachment is more, say, rectangular than linear. And so we would like to have the opportunity to charge based on the square footage rather than a lineal foot. Um, we often need to do an inspection of um paving, for example, if utility um, does utility work and then has to pave a project to meet the um city standard, we need to inspect that. So this is adding a fee for that. And then we've had more requests lately for um an annual blanket encroachment permit. So utilities who have kind of normal maintenance that comes up from time to time or a little bit of work, rather than getting an encroachment permit each time they do a small project. Um, some jurisdictions will issue an annual a blanket encroachment permit that allows those routine things um, to be done per the city standard without coming and getting permit each time. So that would be done annually. So it's it's adding a fee for that. And then the final thing is related to recreation events. Um, there's a couple of changes there. There's a few fees that we've never used. We'd like to just remove. Um, we do get some complaints about our special event application fee. Um, unfortunately, it's a little bit higher than the city of Lakeport, which is only fifteen dollars, but based on some of the complaints, I think it may be better. Um, even though the city is gonna have to subsidize issuing those permits because it definitely takes more time than fifteen dollars worth of of city staff time significantly more to to process a permit. I think it may be helpful just to to match what they're charging. And then something we did a little more research, even after the agenda was posted, this, the recommendation to reduce the deposit at the youth center to match what's at the senior community center. Um, and in in looking at Um, and in in looking at some other fees there, I think even the events in the parks and things like that, we would recommend um, an amended request, which would be to just to reduce the deposit for all of our facilities to a hundred dollars. Uh, we do get some people who inquire about uh, having an event at one of the facilities. And even though the application fee isn't very much, um, in some cases, the deposit is five hundred thousand dollars and they don't end up um, reserving the facility presumably because of the cost of that. It's not something that we normally have to um, utilize withdrawing funds um, from that deposit. So um, we would like to, or we request that the council go ahead and drop that. And if uh, we run into issues moving forward with it, with it not being enough to charge for some damages, then we would return to the council for some amendment. So um, that's my report. Unless you have any question.
Thank you. City Manager, do you have any, council have any questions?
I do have a question. Um, is that including the stage rental at the park?
Yes.
Okay. Is it often that people vandalize or that we have to use a deposit money for repairs or cleanup?
It's been very rare. I mean, um, if Ms. Watson wants to address, but I think it's it's very rare that we've had issue.
Yes, that is correct. Um, I think probably in the past few years, we've had to deduct costs maybe one time in maybe the last eight or nine years. So people leave it very clean and and take care of, take care of it. So that's good.
The other key. Okay. See no more comments. I will uh, open this for public comment. Public, have any uh, any comments from the, the public? Public, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Are there any comments from uh, council deliberation on this item? Okay, I'll now close the public hearing. Now I will take a motion on this item.
I move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six and updated fee schedule.
I second.
Motion has been made by Vice Mayor Sloton and seconded by Councilmember Downey.
Mr. Mayor, can I just clarify that that's also um, as amended related to the deposit?
Yes. I amend my motion to include the change in deposits.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the second.
So, here we go.
We go. All right.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. We'll now move on to City Manager and Councilmember Reports. For norms and procedures, council reports at the end of council meetings shall be limited to announcing mayor-appointed regional board activities on which council members serve, city and city-sponsored activities and items which directly affect the city. City Manager Flora, you have anything to report under those circumstances?
Well, since you've narrowed it down, I'm gonna have to review my list here. Uh, just, yeah, a few things. So um, the animal care RFP is out. Proposals are due at the end of this month. The Blue Ribbon Committee on Clear Lake uh, recently met and there's a number of projects that were funded. And one of them is the Green Water Services Project, which is proposed here across the street, which is um, incorporating ozone nano bubbles into the water column is supposed to um, significantly improve water quality. There was also a project that we had a presentation on some time ago that was the algae harvesting system that was proposed to be installed at Red Bud Park. Um, that was also approved for funding. Um, so starting to coordinate with them to talk about um, moving forward on that. And then I just update on the other one. It was actually mentioned tonight that um, millions were spent on Sonic Buoyes in the lake, um, which um, the county did receive a grant of just over a million dollars to install those buoys uh, at the very beginning of this year. Unfortunately, um, the county has not finished the environmental review process, and um, I don't have a timeline on when those are going to be installed. So um, you all know, it was announced in the newsletter today that Adventist Health informed us that they were canceling the medical clinic project at the airport, which is disappointing. Uh, we met, um, well, there's a couple, we met today related to a couple of projects with Clerk, the Clear Lake Environmental Research Center related to some fire mitigation work um, in the city, both in the avenues and um, on state park property. So um, both of those projects seem to be moving forward um in a good manner. Uh, we are working closely with the um, development firm that has a proposal for the Austin Resort property across the street. Um, excited about um, the vision for that. And I believe what they're working on aligns closely with what the city wants to see there. Um, I guess I should have rearranged my order. Fortunately, ending this on a negative note, but um, I did mention a few weeks back about the tree that we had to take down in the park related to Mediterranean oak or beetle, and that there is concern about some of the trees across the street. Um, our harvest has um, taken a close look at all those, and we are gonna have to take two more of those large oaks down. Um, and he's hopeful that with some additional pruning, um, some of them can be saved, but it looks like there's a infestation starting in all of them. So.
This is in Austin.
That's on the beach side, those large ones over there. So very bad deal there. But um, so sorry to end on a bad note, but that's my report.
Okay. You didn't want to comment on the APC meeting you attended?
Oh, that's your comment.
That's yours.
I did consider it, but since there's two of you that were there, I'm sure you can handle it.
All right. Okay, Councilmember Wilson.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hooton.
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Downey, come on, I know.
I have something to report. So on October nineteenth, it's coming up. Jamison Humane partnering with uh, Clear Lake Animal Association, they are going to be having a vaccine and microchip clinic at the senior center. Um, and that's also including rabies, uh, distemper and FERCP for felines um, and free microchipping. Um, I will, I myself will be volunteering there. Um, it's on Sunday, October nineteenth, from ten to one o'clock at the senior center. And it's free. Everything is free. And they also hand out like food crates, the dog food uh, crates and like jackets and collars and leashes. So it's a, it's a great um, event that we put on for the community, for our animals. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Downey. Vice Mayor?
I attended the uh, APC meeting in the Lakeport City Hall. Uh, there was quite some con- consideration on uh, the money for the roundabout, damn road roundabout. And at the end, um, APC is trying to get the money to be able to but I believe that our construction plans are just about done. And that if we can hopefully go out the bid and have it covered by uh, program money. Still not quite sure what that all means, but.
Yeah, I think this. You don't.
Yeah.
I also attended that meeting and was really hoping that that between uh, Vice Mayor Sloton and City Manager Flora, they covered all of this. But I think they had, just to add to that, I think the total amount being programmed uh, for two projects, one in Lakeport, Soda Bay, and our roundabout here in Clear Lake was uh, what, five point five eight million for the Lakeport Soda Bay and pardon me, two point eight, and then uh, two point eight million and change would be available in the current, this next programming, if we can get it through for Clear Lake. And if we can get it through and funded, it possibly would be available by July first. Um, or we're ready to go out to bid on January first, so we would certainly be able to go out to bid on July. But we will have to come up with an additional two five hundred, yeah, seven hundred thousand, I think.
Yeah, over seven hundred thousand.
Which we thought we could move some, well, career words. We could move some funding around to get that. So we're very hopeful that uh, we can get that roundabout going this coming fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. And that's all I have.
Um, if I can do a quick do-over since you brought that up. Um, so related to that, some some new news. This is not a promise at this point, but um, we opened bids yesterday on the Burns Valley Arrowhead Olympic um, project. They came in quite a bit lower than was estimated. So we have a little over six million dollars left in that grant. Um, that, you know, we we have to use uh, by next year. And the bids came in just over three million dollars. So we actually have over three million dollars available. Um, and in having discussions about what to do with that, this project came up. We believe it may be eligible. So we're arranging conversation with the HCD about that. Um, and if it is determined to be eligible, I mean, all the environmental review's been done and everything. So um, we might be able to start um on that much earlier. Um, if we can get, get the project funded with this grant. So that would be great. And then the, you know, there's uncertainty whether the two point eight million is even gonna be available. So
That's outstanding.
Fingers crossed that um, we're gonna be able to make this happen.
That's outstanding. That's great news. You could have ended on that. The first time around. Instead of that other one. Okay, uh, moving right along to future agenda items. Does uh, any council member wish to get consensus to place an item on a future agenda? Member.
I think there's a little leftover from the last one, but it's an appointment to the.
Right, to the continual care. Um.
Point.
Member Hooton, did you have something? No, okay, you keep playing on your. Yeah. All right. So just the continual care is a carryover future request, agenda request. Um, and I don't think we have to do another voice vote on that. So, thank you, everyone who took the time to submit their comments via Zoom and to those who are watching our meeting on YouTube here in council chambers. We will now adjourn the meeting at uh, what's that, five, four minutes to eight? Or no.
Yeah, we need to open it.
Twenty minutes.
Fifty-six.
Yep, seven fifty-six. Thank you.
No, that's fine. So uh, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that was all proper. Um, so now that the regular meeting is closed, we will need to open the special meeting. Um, and then, you know, I'd recommend a a motion to adjourn it immediately.
Okay, well, we might as well get right to that.
Yeah.
At seven fifty-seven, open the special meeting of the uh, Clear Lake City Council, Clear Lake City Hall Council Chamber, fourteen oh five oh Olympic Drive, Clear Lake, California. And we, do we need, yeah, we do need a roll call, call. So, Madam Clerk, could you do that?
Councilmember Wilson?
Present.
Councilmember Hooton?
Here.
Councilmember Downey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sloton?
Here.
Mayor Kramer?
Here. All right, uh, item. We'll just move right on to the, into the items now.
Yes, and just by way of explanation, this, this was the ordinance. This is on tonight because it's the ordinance to join, formally join the JPA. Um, we'd originally intended to do this over two meetings, because there's no really, there's no reason to have a formal hearing on an, on an ordinance if the resolution didn't pass, but we didn't have any more meetings in October. Um, uh, procedurally, if the council chooses, it doesn't have to take up the item. Um, it can proceed by motion to adjourn. Uh, right now, it it is move. We cannot join legally. We cannot join.
All right. So oil dispens of the item that we were firmly going to take up. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And second it. Tell, motion is uh, approved to adjourn at seven fifty-eight.
Right.
Didn't, didn't make it in your face.